Good evening. It's time for our meeting this evening. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the roll call will show that everyone is here except for Tom Ordinero. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes approval of minutes from the October 27th, 25 meeting, approval of bills and claims and licenses and permits, which includes the renewal of Class B retail alcohol license for Kimess Carroll County Store Number Two. Are there any questions? Will there be a motion to approve? By Jason, we'll go JJ for the second. Roll call vote, please. All right, are there any oral requests or communications from the audience regarding anything that is not on the agenda this evening? Maybe like to speak tonight? All right, moving on, that's seeing that. We're going to move one thing up and that's I'm going to have Laverne Dirks speak about his new appointment to the Iowa League of Cities Executive Board. Congratulations, Laverne, and we'd like you to explain that to everyone, what that will entail for you.
Well, the one thing they they're looking at is with my 10 years in school board and now 10 years on city council, they want me to join them when the legislative session starts in January. They just feel having a person that is a voted person is more important sometimes than than just their committees talking, so. I got a lot of learning to do there, a lot of meetings, a lot of reading to do, so. So the other thing is, is if there's anything that the public is interested in me bringing forward, I'll be your man. So that's it.
All right, well, congratulations on your appointment. It's a great thing for you and it's also a great thing for Carol. All right, we'll go on to ordinances and we have one this evening, Carol Municipal Golf Course Fees and Charges, second reading. Chad.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is just the second reading of the proposed golf course annual fees. So far, we have gotten no feedback from the general public, so I would recommend accepting the second and up to you guys on waiving the third.
I'd rather not waive the third. Let's just see if it's a fee increase.
Yeah, that I'm fine with that as well.
I just want to give anyone an opportunity, you know, increasing fees, I want to give people as much time as they want, you know?
All right, so would there be a motion to approve the second reading?
So moved.
By Jason, Laverne seconded. Roll call, please.
Shrek?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. We'll move on to resolutions and cemetery fees. Yeah, cemetery fees and Chad.
Yeah, thanks again. Due to the rising costs and various situations we've encountered out at the cemetery, staff has had multiple conversations about adjusting, not only increasing of some of the prices, but as well as changing a couple of the things on how we do opening and closings. Excuse me. Below is a list of all the the current and proposed rates that we have. On top of that, some of the new proposals that we have would be half price internment when ashes are in the same urn. That's something we've been seeing a lot recently and we've never had a price for it. So this would basically just make sure it covers our cost for any filings with the state, but also cover the the work needing to be done. We're seeing a lot of combination urns, so like I said, two piece, two people in the same urn. Half price internment when ashes are set into stone. We're seeing a lot of benches and a lot of new stones that actually have basically pockets in them that can be opened up and the ashes and the urn are put into that pocket and then set with a lifetime set screw so it can never be reopened. Weekday burials, changing the hours for those Saturday burials. Confirming, we haven't ran into this issue other than the city holidays, but just adding city holidays to the no burials on Sundays. Main reason because of the worker pay that's involved with that. And then adding winter rates is another one because we do go through so much propane thawing graves out in the winter. Just adding that to a proposed fee. And then the last change we're making is just raising the price on disinternments and then setting when those disinternments can happen. We've had a couple people come and ask about doing a disinternment in the dead of winter. It's very, very tough to do, getting equipment back to that area, thawing the grave, digging while it's either wet, muddy, frozen. So obviously reflecting that rate to match the work being done. That's basically the gist of everything we're proposing. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Have you thought about putting like a veterans discount or if a veteran wants to be buried on Veterans Day that he doesn't have the up charge?
We never had that brought to us before.
So the other thing is, is people that are doing urns, are they using a full lot like you would if it's a casket?
Yes. So when you buy a lot, you can either put your casket in or urns.
Has there been any talk of having like a wall of just those and saving space in the cemetery?
Yep. So obviously we have that four acres to on the south side of the cemetery. So once we hit a certain level of basically sold lots, we're going to have to develop that area. And that's one of the major things that we've discussed about adding, just to save space, cheaper, everything like that.
Okay.
What is the, I'm thinking it's the disinterment, but it can, well, as you did this, what would you say was the most direct, I'm going to use the word drastic, but that's not what I want. But what is the most significant change that you made in these policies, would you say?
Really isn't anything too crazy. A lot of it's just reflecting some of the stuff we've been seeing. I mean, up until five years ago, we'd never seen urns or headstones or benches that have own vaults in for them. We hadn't really seen any combination urns in that time until just as of recent and we made a price to help reflect that instead of giving two charges. That's that's kind of the main, the main ones.
All right, and then a combination urn. So this urn is in the ground. Another loved one passes away, it's brought back up?
Never usually brought back up. So if
They wait.
Person A passes away, you know, they get put in the urn. And then over time, as second person, family member, whatever passes away, they can be added to the urn and then it's buried in one spot. We've been seeing quite a few of those.
And it's limited to two?
Yes. Yep. So every space, the max that we allow is two per plot.
Okay. Even if it's in the same urn?
Yep.
I just want to clarify that, so it's understood, so. Anyone else have any questions regarding this? I'd look for a motion to approve the resolution authorizing cemetery fees and charges to begin December 1st, 2025.
So moved.
JJ made the motion, Laverne seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Bauer?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to a resolution setting a public hearing on the adoption of the 2021 building codes. And Dan?
Thank you. This is a resolution for setting a public hearing to adopt the 2021 building codes. Staff has been working with Vintre and Kim Incorporated since May of 2025 for building code inspections. Currently, the city is under using the code of 2015 and working with V and K, they would just recommend that any city should stay within three years of the current, whatever the state is using on codes. So they recommended that we update our building codes for the city. Kind of the purpose for the adoption of 21 addition is to, it's essential for the integrity and advancement of safety, sustainability and the cost effective construction practices within the community. Along with that, staff has reviewed the codes and proposed minor and necessary local amendments to address the specific local conditions which require formal findings to support their adoption. Adoption ensures that the city remains compliant with state mandates regarding building code enforcements. The adoption process has also been reviewed by the city attorney. And as required in by Section 380.1 of the Iowa Code, the city must hold a public hearing on the proposed building codes before they can be adopted. So attached is a resolution to set the public hearing for November 24th and 2025 council meeting. And at the conclusion of the public meeting in November 24th, the council can begin the ordinance adoption process. So it's just if council could but have discussion on and approval of the resolution setting the public hearing for November 24th of 2025 and on the adoption of the 2021 building codes.
What are the largest changes that you see from the 15 to 21?
One of the major ones that we've dealt with, that they've dealt with is when it comes to sprinkler systems at home. State code right now requires every home being built to have sprinklers.
Which is not feasible at all.
Which is not feasible at all. So part of that is amendment. And then there's also it puts amendments into, let's say you want to have a apartment complex of, I think it's 8,000 square feet or less. You can remodel it and not have to bring it in and put sprinkler systems into that code. This is what, this is what V and K sees out there in in the, I think there are 39 communities or counties in the state. So this is what they see and that was kind of what their recommendation was moving forward with ours.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick on Fairview for example, for a second. What's, what's a square footage of one of those properties?
I don't know off the top of my head, but that, I don't, it's square foot and if I'm not mistaken, I think it's numbers. It won't change anything there that I, that I
Okay.
Off the top of my head.
Probably livable square feet, so they should be off the.
That's very minimal there.
But the majority of the changes are pretty simple. I mean,
Okay. I just don't want it to be where it's tougher for somebody to build something.
No.
Or it's not as cost effective.
No, it's actually the, a couple of contractors in town right now that we're talking to is is waiting for this to get passed so they can
Okay.
Continue to
I think it's very important to get
Some of the buildings in town for things like that.
Yeah, like, you know, say we have a building that's, an older building that needs to be rehabbed, that's 9,000 square feet. How do we look past that?
Now?
Well,
Or in the future?
In the future, how do we look past that even?
You mean if it's 9,000?
If it's 9,000 square foot, puts us over that 8,000.
Then it's, it's got to meet the state code. That's why they don't, in their world, that 8,000 square feet is a, is a pretty good mark of of buildings that beyond that, if it's that big, it needs to be sprinkled. It's kind of, I take it that's how their process is.
Do you see anything where buildings are touching, say downtown area? Do you see anything if somebody remodels something like downtown in the future or will that, will that affect anything like that?
It shouldn't affect any of those. No, no.
As long as we have input from our contractors of making things easy moving forward for them is.
In, in reality, that's what this is. I firmly believe that that's what it does.
Okay.
Yep.
If there's no other discussion, I'd look for a motion to set a public hearing for November 24th, 2025 on the adoption of the 2021 building codes. By JJ?
Second.
And second by Kyle. Roll call vote, please.
Atherton?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
All right, we might, we're going to move a little bit out of line, out of the lineup here. Dan, are you ready to talk about the?
I can, if you want.
I know you have to leave early, so just in case it presses you for time, let's go ahead and and move on to the reports of water tanker, fire truck and Dan.
Thank you again. On August 12th to 24th, the council approved the purchase of a water tanker truck from Toine. And that purchase price of that truck was $393,830. Knowing that it would take 775 days to receive this truck, there could be some of the changes to the truck pricing, including major components, engines, transmissions, axles, tires, governmental mandate requirements, tariffs and raw material surcharges. The original purchase, approval of the purchase of the water tanker included the understanding of these changes and would increase and may increase the purchase price. Change order number two is attached detailing the components, increasing of the cost of the chassis by $9,210. Change order number one was in the original purchase price of the truck and that was simply a a safety hand railing put on the back of the truck. I believe it was like $91 is what it had added in there. So the effective change, change order number two for the purchase price is $9,210, which would increase it to $403,040. Just consideration for the approval of the change order number two on the water tanker truck contract of the amount of $9,210. And Dale is here if you have any questions on those increases.
What, what's the two-tone increase?
I'm Dale Derner from Toine. For people that don't know me, the two-tone, what happened when we originally priced this to you, we had 24 pricing. We knew we weren't going to get a 24 chassis, but Freightliner did not have 25 pricing now, okay? And what you're actually getting is a 26, okay? So some of these and Freightliner had increases, paint has gone through the roof. Talk to any auto body, we experience it in our own, on the bodies. That is probably cheaper than most, to be real honest with you. And I'll explain those changes. That two-tone painting increases 2865, which came from Freightliner and they didn't have that increase in the 25 model year. They increased it in the 26 model year. Okay, the Michelin tire increase is basically, they called an impact fee, but it's actually a surcharge on Michelin. They went up that much and then the tariff impact fee, that's what everybody's addressing now. That's comes from the government because some of these are made in Mexico. So that's $1,500 and then the 26 model year increase was 2,500. So at the time, we knew we're going to be, we quoted you a 2025 model year, but we had 24 pricing. They hadn't released a 25 model year. In 24, there was allocations on these chassis. So we, we were upfront. We told, I mean Jerry, the council or mayor signed a paper. We said, hey, we know we're going to have model year increases. And that's basically what it came from, from when we got the bill from the factory from Freightliner, okay? So that's basically the four items that went up.
Regarding that increase, I'm almost surprised it's not more than $2,500 percentage wise. That's not too bad, I guess.
I shared some other vendors, chassis manufacturers. Yours was 1,500 on the tariff. Some of them are 7,000. So all in all, it probably isn't as bad as what I thought it was going to be.
Is this truck on the ground?
Yes, it is. It is here. Okay. And second of all, at the time when we did this in 24, they were looking at emission increases on these motors and we were trying to beat that and that's why, because of the allocations, we all agreed here to go forward with it and we didn't, we missed the engine. Okay, so we missed the big one. They're telling us that might be 30,000. So we missed that. Your, your truck's on the ground, so.
So we shouldn't, since our truck is on the ground, we, we're pretty far in this build. We shouldn't expect more change orders?
No.
Okay.
No, I mean, if they are, Jason, it'd be minor if they decide to add a shelf or something like that, you know, but they're.
No shelves.
I, I, I won't, you know, there's
I'm confident that we want a shelf.
Well, I know, but there's things that
I got you, yeah, but no, no, this is, this is for this completed truck.
Right.
At the door.
Correct.
Some, alright, thank you.
A little confusing on the two-tone. Was the original one two-tone?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Paint went up and labor costs went up in prep is the biggest thing.
I just wondered if it was one-tone before and we
No, 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 we had two-tone in the original quote.
Alright.
That was just what
I get it.
The manufacturers decided they need, and believe me, it's, it's that way across the board.
These tariffs are a real thing. I mean, my youth uniforms got held up for $57 tariff, so. It's out there.
And I can't explain Michelin impact fee, what they call an impact, basically a surcharge. I'm sure it's something to do with oil pricing and stuff like that, but we're seeing that on every manufacturer that we use on the commercial and custom lines both. Okay.
Any other questions for Dale or Dan, either one?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I look for a motion to approve the contract change order in the amount of $9,210.
So moved.
By Jason and seconded by Carolyn. Roll call vote, please.
Atherton?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
All right, very good. Okay, we'll move on to BioKinometrics. We're going back where we were in line. BioKinometrics Holdings LLC and DMBA Properties and Consulting Incorporated and Laura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you don't mind, if we can talk about C, D and E for BioKinometrics, 704 Development Corporation and then
Your mic.
And then the Wendell and Atherton Resolution. This, they all are doing the same thing, but we have separate resolutions and separate agreements with each one of these entities. What's before you tonight is what we call our annual appropriations resolution, where in order to collect the TIF and then the city fulfilled their side of the obligation of the agreement is to approve these annual resolution, annual appropriation resolutions so that we can rebate back to the developer for the development that they did at their respective properties. So we have one for BioKinometrics, which were, it details in the memo that what the developer did and then the city is rebating back the TIF. 704 Development Corp was a housing TIF and then the White Mansion was to rehab that building. So there's more details in each one of these, but basically we're in the middle of these contracts and just looking to continue to keep going on with these obligations.
I have one thing on the villa. We have an open house, open to the public on the 12th that evening, so everyone can kind of see what all was done in there. So worse comes to worse, I think you get a free drink out of me. So, but it will be open on the 12th for tours and stuff like that.
That's just in the evening, Jason, or during the day?
In the evening.
Okay.
But Jerry, if you want to tour, you can come by, buddy.
I've been there, it's very nice. All right, so we would take, we'll need separate motions. So I'll look for a motion on the BioKinometrics Holdings LLC, approval of the resolution of allocating funds from Central Business Jurassic Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation of the payment of tax increment grant to BioKinometrics Holdings LLC and DMBA Properties and Consulting Incorporated for fiscal year 2027.
So moved.
By Jason, seconded by JJ. Roll call vote, please.
Seaman?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
All right, and we'll go with the same explanation, but for 704 Development Corporation for the fiscal year 2027.
So moved.
By Jason?
Second.
Seconded by JJ. Roll call vote, please.
Atherton?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
And the next one will be for the approval of the resolution as stated before for the Brian, the Wendell and Atherton property for fiscal year 2027.
Second.
All right, by JJ, seconded by Kyle. Roll call vote, please.
Bauer?
Yes.
Atherton?
Staying.
Sure, Seaman?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
All right, very good. Thank you. Urban renewal, we'll go on to urban renewal, echo urban renewal plan, excuse me, and Laura.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a resolution to authorize the city to reimburse ourselves for some administrative expenses that we had to set up this urban renewal plan. By certifying this now, it'll freeze our base year where the value of the property was at before they began their construction so we can continue or that we could capture all of the incremental value as it gets on the tax rolls. So this is just to get the, freeze that base year and then we don't lose out any of the incremental value. And for the two, repay the city. We're still working with the developer to get costs to finalize their side of the agreement.
Any questions on this?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion. Seconded by Jay, that motion was by Jason, seconded by JJ. Roll call vote, please.
Atherton?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
All right. And we'll move on to utility bills mailing options. Laura, you're the popular one for this evening. How would you like to speak again?
Yes, thank you. So currently the city prints, stuffs and mails our utility bills in-house and our current holder insert machine is nine years old and well past its useful life. I actually probably should have replaced it at least two or three years ago. So it's, I gathered information about either replacing with a similar model and how much that would cost and the the lowest quote that I got, I checked with a couple of different vendors, was around $15,700 to replace that machine. And then I also took a look at what it truly does cost us in-house with our staff time and buying all the materials. And it's listed in the chart that you have in your memo. And then I also looked at talking with some other cities and talking with some vendors on what it would cost if we actually outsourced the mailing of these utility bills. And as you can see, quotes that were received, the cheapest one was from a company called InfoSend Inc. Quoted as a per piece price of just under 14 cents for one utility bill to be mailed out compared to our current staff cost of just over 27 cents. So I'm looking for council's approval that we start working with InfoSend Inc. to outsource the mailing of utility bills. I talked to some other cities that have our same software as well as them working with InfoSend as well. And found they, the references had nothing but good things to say about the relationship and how well it works to get InfoSend the information to mail out and it just works fairly well for them.
Laura, do we have a break on the postage at all?
We do. Yeah, we get a break and then these companies will get that as well.
So how, percentage wise, how many people get their email, their bill done by email and then some by the postage?
It's a low percentage that we email. It's not very many.
This would be a good time to encourage people.
Time to encourage that.
Yeah.
I've been probably four years now and it's a piece of cake. You know, and while we did, we talked about this a number of years ago and people were worried about that. I don't know how many years I've been on it, but there's no problem, so.
Right.
What do they have to do if they want to go to email?
Just call us at City Hall. We take down their information.
Okay. Time to look.
We do, we, we will tell the customers that we offer that. And so it's just up to them if they want to, since we, I guess, don't incentivize one way or the other. And there's a lot of us, myself, someone included, like to get some paper. But yes, we do offer the email option.
I would just
Is there a plan to go paperless, I guess, eventually, just as being more efficient as, you know what I mean? Obviously stuffing envelopes costs money, you know what I mean? Is there?
I think there's a, I think at a time you have to look at if we're sending out a piece of mail to somebody, we have to charge for that.
Yeah, no, yeah, that's what
If I'm sending, I mean, if I'm a business, I'm sending out 3,500 invoices or whatever it is, I'm going to push to go the electronic way versus spending that much money, postage, time stuffing.
So I guess my question would be, I have no problem approving this, is, but is there a plan in place to eventually wind this down to the point where we're not having to pay this? Or can we come up, after we approve this, can we disagree that we're going to come up with a comprehensive plan of whether it's one year, two years of getting to where we are paperless?
When we talked about this, what, four years ago? Let's just say it's four years ago or whatever. There was quite a bit of resistance on that. But I think, you know, if the public really wants to help the city save some money, this is a way you can do it.
It is three or four years ago. I mean, you look, modern technology has
Yeah.
It's changing and it's
It's changing all the time, so.
It'd be the time, time to address it again.
Send out, I mean, even have a, a public Or maybe if we can send out, I mean, even have a, a public service announcement or something like, how do they feel about going to paperless? Or could, I mean, you know, just to see if that is a possibility, so we're ultimately saving money.
Laura, is there a way to see what we're spending, maybe for the next time this is brought up? See how much we're spending per month on postage?
Right now, I can tell you off the top of my head, we spend just over two thousand dollars on a postage.
What is it per lin- per envelope that we, I know it's discounted off of the price of it.
I don't off the top of my head. I think, cause it's been going up.
He's doing the math. So you're sp- I mean, you're spending over fifty five cents, sixty cents of.
Most of them are going to go at the cheapest rate possible, which is what they call the five digit.
Oh, great, alright.
And then there's um, a, a rate for, so anybody that gets a five one four zero one mailed to that. And then there's a rate, if you have, I think, over, is it like maybe two hundred pieces if it's at five one four? So the things that are going to maybe like Rita, like you, they start with five one four, but the last two digits might be different. That's a little bit higher rate. And then there's ones that, it's like onesie twosies that are possibly probably getting mailed out of state. So those are going at your regular postage rate.
So how many of those thirty five that we send out are already lined, are set up for auto pay?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
I mean, would it make sense that the people that are already set up with auto pay just go paperless and we email them? I mean, maybe that's where to start?
We can ask them, however, right now, the way we offer it is you can get a paper copy if you want one. So it's completely a policy decision that council can make. If you want to force going paperless. Probably your best way of doing that is like Kyle had said, is in essence, you charge a fee to get the paper copy.
Well, we wouldn't be the first ones.
Or even, I think if you're a business too, I know businesses, this has got to be separated out. If you're a business, I know you like having, right, for, for your files. Like I li- I've been one that's been like, why don't you pay me? I didn't get a bill, like, you know, in, in a business. But like for a residence, I don't think it'd be that hard of a, a transition. And, and I think that we need the input from. The city to see where they're at somewhat, like, you know what I mean? If, and, and at least we'll, I don't know how many people are watching. They could give us some type of input on how they feel about us going paperless and saving two thousand dollars a year.
A month.
A month.
A month, yeah, a month, yeah. I mean, it's, that's, that's a nice chunk, yeah, it's a nice chunk of change that, you know, I mean.
Did, did, did you have something you'd like to?
There's one utility that charges a dollar if they have to send you a bill in town, right now.
Okay. All right, that's interesting to know. So let's, that's.
And I don't want to give them, this is a mandating something that.
But this is certainly worth further discussion down the road, so we'll, we'll explore when we can do this. But it's definitely worth going into more, because in fact, I've even written about this uh, before in the paper, so. Um, to encourage people to do just what that is and, and I, I know one negative is, I get a hundred emails a day. So many that it's almost hard to see which is a bill and which is fake and all that stuff. That's probably what some people are afraid of, but. Um, it all should be discussed, but for tonight, we would uh, at least, let's take care of this motion. Oh, one, one last question before we do. Um, they're passing on that discount rate to us on all the stamps, correct?
Yes.
So we're paying for the stamps as a secret invoice from them, or are we paying that straight to the postal service?
No, it would come, I think, from the vendor itself, but it would be their passing on, uh, or passing, it's.
With no increase, it's just this price of the stamp?
Yep, yep.
All right, I'm going to look for a motion now to approve a master service agreement with Info Send Incorporated to mail the city of Carroll utility bills and late notices.
One, one last question. If the um, number of envelopes or number of pieces that we send out changes. Does that change their per piece cost at all?
And do we have to have a minimum with them to have the service?
I don't believe there was a minimum listed in the agreement. They asked approximately how many when they gave us our quote. I guess, and unless it's a drastic, drastic change, they may come back and want to renegotiate. Um, but I don't believe there was any required minimum.
Where are they located?
Um, the, this company, we probably would be mailed out of Chicago. I don't believe there's any in the state of Iowa that I'm aware of.
And how long does this contract last? Is it a year?
Sixty months.
Uh, this one is three years.
Three years.
So we electronically send them the info?
Yes.
Okay.
You, you don't know what the minimum number of, I mean, it's almost impossible to get rid of all mailed bills. So is there a minimum? We don't know that for sure on their contract. I mean, like, so let's say they will do it only if there's five hundred or more.
I don't recall if they.
Can we, ah, man. Can we hold off?
Well, if we hold off, it just means we're going to send our own bills another month, right?
Probably another two months by the time you get set up with them.
Okay.
Can, I'll make a motion to hold off on it, just with the commitment that we are going to look at. Um, that we're going to look at this to see if there's a way that we can save that money and how it would affect the public. That would be.
Can this be approved by the end of the month and without any difference or not, if we decide to go through with it? In other words, if we delay this until our next meeting to get more information.
Laura, on page six, I see underneath twelve point eight, the monthly document volume that info will produce must be similar or at a minimum acceptable. I don't know if that's.
The way I read it, they're getting their money, whether you send two pieces of mail or you send thirty five hundred. There is no like discount, like, oh, you only sent that many this month. It's kind of a standard flat rate of, that's based off of thirty five hundred and that's what you pay. So it's almost like a monthly subscription.
I don't believe on this one, but one of them did give me that quote, but this one was based upon the number of pieces that you sent.
I don't see a timeline where we have to approve it. We could table it until the next council meeting if the council chooses to do that. Continue to just have your staff keep doing it for a while.
For as long as that order lasts.
It, it, it should be a boat anchor now.
Yeah, Aaron, I don't want you to have to wait. I mean, we, we just got to, if we're going to table this or whatever, we got to come to a resolution sooner than later, because I mean. You're stuffing thirty five hundred emails, it, there goes, there goes your whole, there goes your whole day, you know?
And staff spends a lot of time on that.
Spent saving sixteen hundred dollars, but losing countless in man hours. So I mean, I think it's got to be somewhat of a, a rush thing to figure out. If we can do this or not.
If it's not significant to wait two weeks, I think that's, that's what I'd like to see, but.
Well, this month's already getting sent out, so.
Well, yeah, we were planning on having to do in-house this month.
Yeah.
I was hoping to be able to get set up so that we could outsource it for the December mail.
Is that possible if we pass this in November?
Pretty tight.
Okay.
So if we don't pass it, it would require one more month of stuffing envelopes?
And I, I don't know for sure.
Our best guess.
Is that going to be dire to the city's performance for that, you know what I mean? To, and able to save that much money, is it going to be like, or, or can you guys manage to do it for one more month if we have to just kind of figure out?
I mean, if this is the direction council wants to go, yes, we would manage one more month.
Okay.
Current machine.
Well, but the thing is, even if we do move forward with these incentive savings and that sort of thing.
It'll take time.
It would take a long time to get that done.
Acceptance for people to sign up and accept.
So, you know, I mean, if you think about that, as long as there's not a difference between now and next meeting and we table it.
So between now and next meeting, what is the information that council wants?
Wha- I, what I would, what I would want is the uh, uh, suggestions. And I'm, I'm willing to think about it myself, of what kind of incentives we could offer. To get people to, like what Kim said, it costs you a dollar to get a bill, paper bill. Yeah, I, I think an incentive would be a right idea if, I mean.
It's going to take a lot of educating.
To me, that, that's a separate issue, that we could still do that.
Yeah, I agree that is a separate issue.
It is.
I, I think for, for me would be, is if we go from thirty five hundred and for some reason, say we go to two thousand pieces of mail that are going out. Does that change our per piece that's being sent out?
Or can we change the sixty to a, a less of a time? I don't think it will take three years to educate everyone that we're not going, you know what I mean? Like, it, is, is it negotiable to like, I mean, if this was a twelve month thing, a one year thing, that would be easy for me. It'll take, we have, you know what I mean? Like, we have time to get everyone transitioned and stuff like that. I just, a three year thing seems.
That would be then the next question to find out between now and two weeks from now.
Okay, and then negotiate, like do a twelve month and then?
You do a twelve month and that way everything, that way it buys us some time and space to be able to see. Where, where, yeah, where, where this is going, you know? That's my biggest thing is the length of it, I just.
Maybe you could ask some of these other towns how just, how long they're, I'm assuming they were required to sign three years, but it'd be interesting to see.
And we might walk out of here and our phones blow up. Don't go pay for what's, you know, I don't.
Well, that's, yeah, and that's okay too, if that's what.
Kind of did the last time.
And that was even on, that was voluntary even, completely, but it did save a lot of money, so.
Yes.
Okay, so we're looking at seeing if there is a possibility um, that there would be a change if the number of pieces went down drastically.
Tell, yeah, tell, tell them the council had some questions before they'd be able to approve it.
And then looking at a twelve month agreement um, instead of a three year initial term.
That's, anything else?
And then I don't know if we can, how we can get to the public to get some suggestions on where we're at. I hate to say like even like a Facebook post, because you get the.
We can put it on.
You, you get the, you get what you put out there.
Do we have anything on the current bill out, or bill that goes out, like to go paperless?
We haven't for a while. We'll do them intermittently, um, some type of a newsletter.
To let them know that it's available. But we've, what we've never done is made it, is encouraged it. We've just said it's available.
Right, I'm not sure exactly. It's been a long time since we've finally done one of those, yeah.
So, okay, um, we'll need a motion to table this, is that correct?
Motion table.
I'll second.
May it be specific to table it until November twenty fourth meeting? All right?
Yes.
Okay, and Jason made the motion, JJ. Uh, seconded, roll call vote please.
Dirks?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right. Good discussion.
Was a good discussion.
Next we'll go to downtown assessment report recommendation. And that is, Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, when, when we had our downtown assessment, one of the recommendations was to reestablish as a social and commercial center of the, of the community. Is our downtown area um, must become valuable, or our downtown must become more valuable physically, economically, socially and politically. Uh, public art and green space being vibrancy and brings vibrancy and life to commercial areas. And outdoor amenity space creates a welcoming space that draws people to spend more time downtown, leading to increased foot traffic and stronger local sales. With that, um, we, we would requested a proposal for scope of services from Bolton and Mink. To provide a concept design for the, for a downtown pocket park to be located in the current green space to the west of Carroll Five Theaters. Um, you have that proposal with you. Um, the Chamber and myself have been meeting and have worked with. Uh, actually have contacted the owners of Carroll Five Theater and have been working with uh, some other uh. Partners in the downtown area to consider something to, to help. Uh, energize the uh, traffic downtown and we would strongly recommend that this is as a first step to uh. Approve this uh, proposal so that we could uh, beautify that downtown park.
So this is just a company that like designs it or?
Well, Bolton and Mink is an engineering firm and they had, uh, this specific engineer has been working with IEDA before. Um, I even think they did the, if you looked in the uh, downtown assessment, he might have done the drawing in. The downtown assessment.
Sorry, I looked at that.
So, um, that, that specific drawing really doesn't fit with what we can and can't do in the downtown park. But he, he's, he's what I would call somewhat of an expert on those types of parks.
So the thing, when we're done with this, this will be engineered. This isn't something that, they said this is designed and then we have to go out and engineer it again.
No, the, the, the engineering part of that, well, I don't think you have to engineer this. It's just a more, this is a design, it's kind of an architectural design more than it is an engineering uh, feat. To uh, engineer how, what we're going to put in the park.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, you know, I, I hate when I see we have to get a design and then we get the, from an engineer and then the engineer has to. We have to engineer the design and then somebody like, like, you know what I mean? Like, I just want to make sure that this eleven grand. We end up with something that somebody can go out and install.
Well, this will be the, this will be the uh, you know, you've got, this is the scope of pers- for uh, for services is for the design. Doesn't mean, it depends, it depends on what we put in that, I mean, if we're talking about art, that's not a designed thing. That's more of, an artist is going to create it and then we're going to have to put it in that park to create that, so.
If you look in the document on pages nineteen and twenty, it, there is a photo. Um, and then a, a paragraph that briefly describes potential um, amenities in this area. And then if you go down pa- that's page nineteen and then twenty gives you a similar sketch. To what's in our, our packet. The engineer, if you look at the scope of services too. The engineering uh, has to do with landscaping, plantings, et cetera. So they address drain, potential drainage problems that may affect the, the two structures. That are on each side contiguous to this. So in the scope of services, it, it does take engineering. As well as doing the aesthetics.
So yeah, I read it too. That's why I'm trying to, maybe you didn't understand my question. I want to make sure that with what they wrote in there. I'm not going to turn around and have to get another thing, person to engineer. That, that's, because like if we do, this is something, I mean, with the design of it. If there's no engineering, I mean, we could probably even send this out to our high schools to, to figure out a plan of what artwork and stuff is in there. Instead of spending the eleven thousand dollars for an outside, you know what I mean?
I understand what you're saying. I, I can't give you a complete hundred percent. No, we're not going to have other costs there. Because there are stuff that we took out of this initial phase as far as surveying the ground. Because we really didn't think they needed to survey the ground when it's a flat piece of ground and you can look at it. So I, would I like to be a hundred percent confident and tell you, no, we won't have any other fees with the services? Yes, I would like that, but I don't know if I can completely give you that answer.
So Aaron, this is just for that, that area?
Correct, and it, and it's the start, because we're going to want to look at, well, engineering wise, I don't know if you have more engineering. If you, as you start looking at putting art on Adam Street and over towards the library, but I don't think. The design of the, this is strictly for the pocket park at this point, yes.
I should say that. I am all for doing something down there. My only hangup is, is that property is not owned by the city, the Chamber. It is privately owned. So if we, as city and taxpayers, invest money in this of X amount of dollars. Is it two years down the road, five years down the road, before they sell, expand? Don't want it, some, don't want that there.
The answer to your question is, is that conversation has been had and it's not going to be sold. It's going to be ours for an extensive period of time. They're not even looking, they're talking, we're talking more closer to a ten year period, if anything, at that point.
I mean, is this something we, we have, say, a lease on?
Yes.
Okay.
We already have a lease where we maintain.
I'm just thinking, worst case scenario, say somebody falls, they get sue happy, you know, who's liable then?
That, that, that would be, it would be the part, city's.
Okay.
Area, but yes, so yes, we would have a lease, we'll have to change the current lease, but we will have a lease. How many years? How many do you want, ten?
So I love the idea, I just don't love the idea of the number if the engineering isn't like guaranteed. So I love the idea, I just don't love the idea of the number if the engineering isn't like guaranteed, because I think that this thing could be designed for a whole lot cheaper. And we'd end up with the exact same thing, that's, that's just, and that's, some people agree with me, some people don't, won't agree with me, you know, um. That's, that's just a ca- catch that I have, is that we're going to some outside company to design something in our own community that we could probably just take care of in our own community.
We had a conversation about that and most of us had, our conversation was, I, I don't know what I would put in a pocket park that's supposed to be more of a. Artistic thing than it is a, we're gonna throw in some. Uh. Playground equipment.
Have we thought about reaching out to Iowa State and having one of their students come in and do this as a project, like we did the sidewalks?
We haven't contacted Iowa State to ask them that, no.
I mean, is that an?
Yep. Kimberly's part of our group that's been talking about this.
So good evening, Kimberly, keep in touch with the Chamber and the Carroll County Growth Partnership. Um, JJ, we have been in contact with Iowa State, sorry, Aaron.
Oh, you have, nevermind.
But it was, it was on a different project, that started out as um. So at the Depot Park area, the whole, that whole entire property, our landscaping is just aging out and our bushes are collapsing and dying. So we've been in contact with Iowa State on a design of that property. And they asked us if they could extend the project into downtown. Because from their vantage point or what, from their view, the depot does kind of just keep going into the downtown area as far as that's concerned. Um, I think there's opportunity there, um, the problem is, is that you're dependent on professors and their academics, their academia. Their year, the students that they're working with, and so that can kind of gets kicked down the road. Um, so we're kind of in a holding pattern. After probably six months of conversations of really not knowing where we're at with that.
We asked any of our local landscaping companies, have they, and they, 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 they're all just like baffled by what to do in there?
So this, the pocket park thing is more than a landscaping project. It's um. It would be using different things other than just landscaping products, so. The answer is no, we haven't.
So it would be more, more focused towards public art and other. Yeah, lan- the landscaping side of it's probably a, a minimal part of it as far as what, what the, creating that as a destination, we're probably thinking more of. Again, an artistic tourist, tourism type area where people would want to go look at the. Different pieces of art or uh. Interactive.
Are you, I just look at this one, like outdoor seating. Somebody's gonna do this, they're gonna wanna blueprint on what they're doing, is that essentially gonna lay that out there?
Right, so then, so then your local, you know, whoever locally can then uh carry through the project. Labor wise, yeah, would have a, have that blueprint.
JJ, as far as, excuse me, Iowa State, when I was on the Park and Rec Board, we had a whole deal with Graham Park tied in with the football stadium and. Stuff like that, and we did, they, they actually came over and worked with us, it was Barry Bruner and Matt Raymakers and myself, and. You know, we went forward with that, but the end of the school year happened at Iowa State and they were gone, and then we were done. So.
I just figured this is a small pocket park, like maybe this is a project that you could do in a semester, like.
So I did, I did reach out.
I thought it was gonna be a good deal, but all of a sudden, it was dead in the water because they were gone.
There are some grants um that I've been checking into. That would help with these costs and unfortunately those funds are depleted. So at least a couple of the sources.
My hang up is if we can keep it internal to us, I think that you end up with a better product. You did, because. Your own sweat equity went into it in our community, we have very artistic people and designers and all this other kind of stuff.
Our inter- our, our artistic people here in town involved. But again, that, their, their input at this point was, yeah, we don't know how to do this with a park. So we've talked to the Laura Camitos, the s- school art teachers, um. I can't remember who else is on that.
About five people. That we've been meeting with.
So you're saying they wanted something like this to go by?
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, our hope is to.
The only thing I feared, I, I remember is we, we've looked into this before doing things there. And there are some electrical problems that they have to be aware of that from ground electricity that they're a.
Mid, or mid America has.
Mid America has a transformer right there that can't be moved and, and. Uh, that would be one fear I'd have if we just go in there on our own. Without someone checking into that and I would hope that that would be part of this, is that they would. Do that.
Is that part of this, this is all, that's where I'm getting at.
That's what the scope of service is for, is to tell us what we can and can't do, here's a general design.
I love the idea, if that makes sense, love the idea. I do, oh, yeah.
Well, Hotel Milital Tax is designed for this type of thing. My only concern is I would like to see some type of yearly or ten year, five year, whatever. Contract with whoever owns that land before we start rolling forward with all this.
So they, uh, Fridley Theaters, the owner has done this in other communities and we can go back to that and those communities and see, or, or to him. And see what kind of a lease he has set in place, long term wise.
Yeah, I think for, for me, I think if we could have something long term with, with some options in there, you know, just like. If, if I'm gonna go rent a, a business space, you know, what is, what's my ten year and then is there a five year options? Just to get us locked in, to really get the best.
I agree with you guys, so I don't know if we need to table it till we get that signed commitment saying, you're not gonna touch this for fifteen years.
I definitely think something down there will change that area drastically and make a huge difference.
I think we gotta, love the idea, I just wanna make sure that the things are in place so we don't get stuck.
There's a lot of people down there now with fusion dance and all that.
Yes.
Right, and it would be really nice to have, because there are so many kids down there now with fusion and the ice cream shop and. There's even dads down there, we're getting comments um that are shopping, believe it or not, which is a good thing to have, but um, but they're wanting to. You know, when it's nice out, they're gonna want a place to hang out and if we have that and we have interactive things for. Uh, kids of different ages and even thinking about our new Hope Residence or. Um, you know, folks with autism, having some of those interactive pieces um that engage. Um, people in our community overall and in general, and then also there's the parking behind there. Um, that to the south, it is kind of forgotten about. You know, years back when that all was filled in with buildings, um, we parked back there a lot. That was used all the time. Um, but now it's, it's a little bit forgotten about, so hoping that this will really connect that parking area. To downtown and, and this park area will be kind of a, a gateway, if you will.
So I wanna make a motion to table it. Just until we can find out whether there is, we, we have a signed lease. And in that time, if we can make sure that we have exhausted every last means. To see if somebody can design this, I think that I would feel more comfortable with that, and so that would be my motion now.
There's a second?
Well, hang on.
And we can wait.
At the, at the League of Cities, I talked to Bolton and Mink and this is one of their specialties, is doing stuff like this, so.
I'm gonna second it just because I, I, I truly think there's somebody in town. A landscaper or someone that could come up with a design that I think everybody would be happy with and maybe in that time.
My motion was to table it. Um. At a minimum, till we find out.
The lease is what you mentioned though, right?
And I also that we have exhausted all means and.
Okay.
On a design, and, and it sounds so trivial, but it's not, a lot of times if you get something designed in town by somebody local, and that's not always the case. There's some things that we just don't have in Carroll, you know, but creating an artistic park, I feel like. Is something that we as a community, if you kind of come together and, and figure this out internally to us. And so, and maybe that's not the case, but I just wanna make sure that all avenues of approach have been expelled before we just go out and pay. And, and, and I'm sure this is a fine company, you know, this is a fine company, they probably do a great job, you know what I mean? It's just kind of the vibe, and so I'd like to table it for those reasons, so that was my motion.
Do we have any, any local landscapers, et cetera, on, in your group already?
Not for landscaping, no, this, this was focused more on creating a artistic space. So no, we did not talk to landscapers at that point.
And I'll pledge you, I, I'll make some phone calls myself and I'll be in contact just to see, you know what I mean, i- if this is. Possible, because I'd rather have eleven thousand dollars go to the actual project, you know, which we would always like, and so. I hate having to table it, I don't want to because I truly do think it's a great idea, I think we just need some questions answered before we move forward.
Could, could you break it down into two motions, Jason, uh, because we're dealing with two entities. An engineering group that has put forth a proposal as well as the people that own the theater, to me, they're two separate.
Well, they're one and the same because I'm not gonna approve an engineering if I don't own the property.
So.
I think it's just a motion to postpone the decision.
Correct, so.
And the direction is for us to find.
Uh, the information is, yes.
Because if I don't own the property, I'm definitely not gonna spend eleven thousand, or I, I, if they're gonna come in. If there's no commitment to them doing it, it's just one and the same, I'm not gonna put eleven thousand eight hun- maybe you would, I wouldn't do it if they're gonna come in and just knock it down.
I think it's critical that we have some type of direction regarding the length of the lease.
Yes.
That to me is key.
Yeah.
Alright, so there is, there is a motion.
Yep, to postpone to a future council meeting.
By Jason, and, and seconded by JJ.
Now, if that's the next council meeting, that's fine, or, or, I guess.
Right, but parliamentary procedures, you have to have it on the next council meeting. Okay, so that's fine.
But that could get me, even if we don't have the answer, we just postpone it again?
You have to have it at the next meeting.
If what?
If what? If you're tabling this, a, a topic, you're supposed to address it at the, the first thing of the next meeting.
Accurate?
Am I pretty ac-? I, 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 maybe I'm in, and, and maybe I'm not right, but I, that's the way I've understood it for years.
Yeah, Aaron, I don't, I don't think that's necessarily true.
No, not on.
Okay.
I think that would be part of the, the motion if you wanna follow that philosophy. You know, if Jason's saying I motion to table until next meeting.
Oh, I, I don't think.
Motion to table till we have the right information.
Kimberly, would you like more time than two weeks from now to get this? You, you, it's really, I don't wanna put anybody under the, the gun to have to get these things answered that quickly, I mean, it's.
I, I don't think it would be that hard, I would be getting that information, so.
Oh, okay, 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 um, you can get all that information, but then, okay, then we can.
At least it's easy to get by then.
Yep.
So I guess with Dave, we'll keep it open and then if it, he comes through, we'll put it the first thing, you, can we do that, like if, in case you don't get it, like?
If the actual parliamentarian says it's okay, then it is okay.
Yeah, so we'll postpone it.
You don't put a day behind it, you're fine.
Yeah, let's, I, so I make a motion to both postpone it until we find the information out that we need.
There you go.
Keep the vague, does that work?
We're keeping our second. Alright, go ahead, roll call vote please.
Shrek?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Very good. Alright, give the water speaker already. Move on to bid opening report for the ban shell, structure repair, and Chad.
Thank you, uh, October thirtieth, we got a bid back or, yeah, bid back for the repair of the shell structure itself. We're down at the ban shell. Uh, that single bid came from Regalar Drywall in the amount of thirty-eight thousand seven fifty. Um, if you choose to accept tonight, that work won't be done until the spring, just because of the conditions. Um, of the materials that he's putting on. Um. All funding for this project has been received from private grants and donations. Um, there'll be an extra couple of steps that we have listed out. Um, we'll be collecting some of those bids here very soon. That will follow this work, but this has to be basically second in line for the work on the ban shell. Be happy to answer any questions on the ban shell, ban shell project.
When is this work to be done?
This work will be done in the spring, early spring.
Alright.
Do we have a total estimate cost on it?
Rough estimate right now is about eighty thousand total.
So moved.
Well, let's make sure that we don't have any more questions first before. We accept that, so, nothing here, nothing there. No input.
I do have something, I wanna thank all the people that were involved in this, of being able to get this thing paid through the private sector. Um, I think that Vicki, great job, I, I know you probably thought I was against it the whole time, but I knew. That Carolizing Community could come together and fix something. Um, and I think that you'll get more out of it when you have community involvement in fixing some of this stuff, more or less than just the government writing a check. Out of your taxes to do it, so Carolyn, I know that you were involved in this as well, um, so I wanna, I, I really do appreciate and thank you guys for, for what you guys did.
Very good, uh, your motion is to approve the.
Yes, it is.
Yes, at thirty-eight, seven, five, is there a second?
Yes.
Second, yeah, okay, uh, roll call vote please.
Shrek?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Alright. Next is state annual financial report for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, back to Laura.
Yes, um, and if you don't mind, Mayor, if we can talk about C, D, and E, the three financial reports that I have to.
Well, that's fine, sure.
So the first one, the state annual financial report is the financial transactions and activity of the city for the whole fiscal year, all of the, all the transactions from all our different funds. Um, the next report, the annual urban renewal report, gets a little bit more in detail of just our tip activity in our urban renewal areas. It gets down more, maybe really more detail of what those projects are and what the expenditures were. And then the final report is the street, uh, the street financial, uh, city street financial report, this is street related expenses only. That the DOT requires because they have to, the state of Iowa DOT has to report it into federal's. Um, DOT as well, so. Kind of the high level, the overall, all the transactions, that first report, the state annual financial, and then we get a little bit more detail on the other two reports on very specific topics. I don't plan to go line by line, but if you do have a question on anything, I'll see if I can do to answer it. But each one of these are required, due by December first, with the filings to the different respective entities.
And, uh, my only question is, this is complete as you presented it to us?
Yes.
Right?
Yep, yep, this is what will get filed with each of the entities.
Any questions for Laura? Uh, I'm gonna make a motion, or. I, I'm not going to make a motion, I'm going to look for a motion for council, uh, for authorization for publication of the state annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June twenty, June thirtieth to twenty-five.
So moved.
Uh, by Jason, is there a second?
Second.
By Kyle, roll call.
Laverne.
Okay, sorry, Laverne. Um. Roll call vote please.
Shrek?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Look for a motion for approval of the annual urban renewal report for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
So moved.
By Jason?
Kyle.
Kyle, okay, alright, by Kyle, roll call please.
Atherton?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
And approval of the city street finance report for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
So moved.
Second, and that was Kyle. Uh, Jason and Kyle, and, uh, roll call vote on that please.
Atherton?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Alright, well, thank you for that, looks like a lot of work, Laura. Looks like it took you quite a bit of time. Um, committee reports are all available for each of us, comments from the mayor, I have none at this time. Any comments from the city council?
I do, uh, on the eve of uh Veterans Day, I wanna take a moment and. Thank every veteran across our nation. Um, for the sacrifice that I made, and a lot of times on Veterans Day, you just think about the individual veteran. But for a veteran to get to where they need to be, it takes their entire family, and so the sacrifice of the family, I know JJ, your, your husband. So happy Veterans Day as well to you. And one last thing, the United States Marine Corps today celebrates its two-hundred-and-fiftieth year uh birthday. Happy birthday Marines, Semper Fi Ellis. And, and I warn America's foes that if they have any interest in raising their next generation, I would tread lightly with the United States. So Semper Fi Marines, happy birthday. You know what a liberal brief is, don't do anything too crazy.
Alright, now I noticed, uh, uh, they, the VFW in Perry had done something, I drove through town the other day, just. Uh, yesterday, and they had a presentation, I noticed it was on the Des Moines. uh, yesterday and they had a presentation. I noticed it was on the Des Moines honoring the, the Marines for the two-hundred-and-fifty years.
And veterans, just so you know, there's a free breakfast, I believe tomorrow at the American Legion.
Right.
I know Grine, you get a free coffee if you're a veteran and I'm sure there's other businesses around I, I.
Alright, well, thank you, Jason.
Go out and get fat and be happy.
Alright, how about from the city manager today?
Uh, just a note, uh, our strategic planning is set for December seventeenth, Wednesday at five o'clock. We'll have it back at Region Twelve again. Uh, as you know, I was gone the last council meeting. I was at the, uh, International City Managers Conference, National Conference. Uh, it was very worthwhile for me to go listen to a lot of different speakers that, uh, talked about the direction of the city manager's position. Um, interpersonal skills, uh, along with, uh, goals and what, uh, city managers see, are seeing across, ch- seeing across the country as challenges and growth opportunities. I thought, uh, a lot of that was very worthwhile. Kind of gave me a lot of assurances that we are going in the right direction and keep working in those directions that we're working on now.
I thought you were just sitting on the beach chasing your bride around.
There was no beach. And I can't chase anyway. I can't run.
Neither can I.
Alright, very good.
We all have fantasies there, right?
I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By JJ.
Oh, JJ coming through.
Jason seconded. Roll call please.
Bauer?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Thank you very much.